I'd like to call the Lancaster Central School District Board Leader Jason Beasley. In the unlikely event of an emergency, if we have to evacuate the boardroom, please note the locations of the exits. At this time, may I ask you to silence your cellphones and rise for the fledge of allegiance to the flag? Please remain standing afterward for a moment's silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, while the nation under God, and in the heavens above, and for the people of this land.
Tonight, we remain standing for Arlene Boardway, a principal in the district from 1973 through 1991, who passed away on March 14th, 2018, and for Judy Brown, a senior clerk typist for Buildings and Grounds from 1990 through 2002, who passed away on April 4th, 2018. For our point O, our presentation for this evening is from the Lancaster Central School District Administrative Team on Student Achievement. With that, I'll turn it over to Dr. Perine.
Well, every year, we come to you about student achievement, telling you about the things that are going on good, and sometimes not so good in the Lancaster schools, and we're doing just that this evening with just a little bit of a twist. Right after the budget vote comes Business First, and it's a time of some tension in our office to determine what rank we get in Business First. I'm going to talk to you a little bit about that this evening and tell you a little bit more, make the picture a little bit bigger. So there are a total of 232 indicators from Business First, and they involve the New York State tests, the ELA test, the math test, the social studies test, the science test, all of these tests, excuse me, not the social studies test, just the science test, the Regents exams, graduation rate, and the Common Core exams, and they involve all of these tests over a course of four years. So we take those calculations and put them all together. So things are, it's very, very important that our students do well, that our proficiency rates are high enough, that our mastery rates are high enough, so that our students do really well on those tests. And in the past few years, we've struggled a little bit on that, only because we don't have the full cohort of students taking the tests as had done in the past. So with some of the opt-out numbers, it challenges these numbers to be as high as we know they can be. So my colleagues and I are going to share a little bit tonight about some other things that are important and a little bit of a twist on this, but before we do that, let me get through this here, and what are the indicators that LCSD aspires to beyond Business
So, I'd like you to take a trip back in time and think about what your elementary school experience was like. Think about what it was like to be a young student in school. And think about what your teachers taught you. As Dr. Periney said, we do have tests in elementary school, they're in ELA, they're in math, they're in science, and I am quite sure that when you were in elementary school, you were taught those things. But is that all that matters to our young students? I'm betting everybody in the room will say there's more that matters than ELA, math, and science, but those are the things that get tested and count for us in Business First. So what I'd like to do today is talk to you a little bit about how Lancaster chooses to use its instructional time and how some other districts use their instructional time, so we can do a little bit of a comparison. So obviously, ELA, math, science, those are the three that get tested, and I had a friend who once upon a time, when I was getting into administration, she said to me, Karen, what gets tested gets done, and I guarantee you that if you go to any top-ten district anywhere in the state, they are teaching those things with ELA and math being the most We, however, think that it's important that our students get social studies instruction. Now, about a decade ago, the state took the social studies test away from fifth grade. Now, you might think that's a good thing, you might think that it's a bad thing, we think that our students still need social studies instruction. We also think that our students need soft skills. All of us can be the most well-read, intelligent people in the world, if we can't interact with other people, we're not getting anywhere. Our students need to know how to get along with each other, how to get along with people who are going to work on an equal level with them, people that are going to be their boss, people who they might be the boss of. We also really believe that technology is up and coming, and we need to balance that with what we do in these other areas. One of the things that we do is, at Williams Street, we have one of the only engineering programs in the state that's offered to elementary students. How many of you knew that library is not mandated for elementary school? It's not. We don't have to give our library, we don't have to give our elementary students library time, but if you are a parent, you also know that it's not just about taking books out of the library anymore, it's understanding how to do research, understanding how to vet websites, and you also know that kids lots of times believe everything they read on the internet, and we don't want them to do that, we want to teach them to be critical thinkers, and our librarians help us with that. We also still give music lessons inside the day, and I'm not talking about just general music class that happens, but band, orchestra, chorus, those kinds of things happen within the day, they are not extra for our students. And then lastly, we also have an art academy at Williams Street, and those are students who have shown real proficiency at art, and we're giving them additional time to work on something that they're passionate about that might lead to a career for them. Now again, I said we were going to talk about some of our neighbors. This is not a profile of one district, this is not, I'm not calling out one particular district, I am looking at some of the things that we know are happening across districts across Western New York. They're teaching ELA, they're teaching math, they are teaching science and social studies, but often because that science exam isn't as important as the ELA and math, science and social studies are taught inside of reading time. Now again, go back to when you were a student, and you were doing that cool science experiment, or you were doing that really interesting social studies project. Is that something that you just wanted to read about, or was it something that you really wanted to get your hands into and really understand better? Many elementary schools have eliminated library time altogether. They also have their music lessons outside of the day. If you want to take band, if you want to take orchestra, then you need to get there either before or after school, and if you can't, then you don't get to be a part of They also don't have additional arts programs. So again, going back to when you sat on the rug in kindergarten, and think about the education you got K through six, and how well-rounded that was. We in Lancaster believe that that is what we want for our students, and we believe that that's what's going to help them be most successful when they get to the middle school, when they get to the high school, when they get to college, when they get to careers, and we don't want it to be just about tests that happen to be indicators on Business First.
So I want you to take a look at the blueberries, because there's a story out there about blueberries. Jamie Volmer, businessman, was doing a presentation in front of a group of educators, and he was bragging about his business and his business model, picked out the very, very best blueberries and the plumpest blueberries, and that made the very, very best ice cream. Of course, as the urban legend goes, the educators promptly said, we don't do that. As educators, we take all kids, and we take them to make them the very best that they are, and how do we do that? We provide supports for those kids. As educators, we look at the least restrictive environment for our kids, we provide program modifications through 504 plans, we provide specially-designed instruction through individual education plans, we have students that are English language learners, we need to figure out a way to work with them, to instruct them, to level their playing field, so that all kids can learn at the same level. We also provide testing accommodations, differentiated instruction, small class size, and reading instruction. That's what we do with kids, to make them work and to make the whole process work for them.
Good evening. Acceleration in New York State testing. So in Lancaster, we've been very fortunate to, under Dr. Vallee's guidance, leadership, and vision, to accelerate in eighth grade in math and science. And we've been doing that for a good handful of years, and under that vision and the work of our teachers all the way through, because acceleration doesn't just start in eighth grade, our teachers have been working towards that for our students through K through three, through Williams Street, and into the middle school, and they're doing a fantastic job, and I'll show you some numbers in a moment that kind of exemplify where we are in terms of acceleration. Where it comes into play with New York State testing is, up until 2014, those students taking Algebra I in eighth grade and living environment in eighth grade also had to take the grade-eight math assessment and the New York State grade-eight science assessment. In 2014, the state applied to the feds for a waiver, which the state got, and at that point, we were able to avoid the double testing. So these students in Algebra I did not have to take the grade-eight math test, these students in living environment did not have to take the grade-eight science test. It might seem like a simple thing, and districts around the area, I'm quite sure, have allowed them to take both. Why would a student want, why would a district want students to take both? Because these are some of our highest-achieving students who are accelerating, and those students are going to essentially count twice for a school and for a district. We wanted to avoid double testing, okay? So since 2013, 2014, we made a decision in concert with the teachers and the building administration to say, what's best for our kids? And hopefully, that's a theme that you guys see as emerging. What is best for our kids? The best thing for our students is to not double test them. They're sitting in the Algebra I class, let's make sure they're taking the Regents exam in Algebra I, and their target is set on that. Let's not have them take the grade-eight math test in addition. That would help the district, that would help the school, that would help our rankings, absolutely 100%, but it's not good for kids, and hopefully, that's a theme that you guys see emerging as the slides continue. By the numbers, just to kind of talk about where our teachers are and where our students are, and the vision that Dr. Vallee kind of put out there years before 2013, 14, the yellow are our numbers, and enrollment has declined slightly, as some of you guys, as you guys know, but our numbers have remained relatively stable, and the percentage is actually increasing. These are all students who are not taking two tests. Prior to 2013, 14, they had to. All students here who had to take two tests, okay? And it's not good for kids, we don't believe it's good for kids, even though that would probably help us in the rankings.
So in this, I guess this discussion, when talking about what Business First means to the district, and really maybe, not maybe, but what is really in the best interest of kids, at least from a Lancaster philosophy, I picked, I think, what, really a good poignant example, I can probably come up with a couple more, but they only said I could do one slide, so I'm just going to do one slide. So I always get one slide. But anyways, the Career Development and Occupational Studies credential and the New York State Alternative Assessment credential largely reflect the idea that children can be successful no matter their cognitive level, especially with an ISAC credential, but also that they're going to be exposed, like Karen said, to develop soft skills, they're going to learn how to work, they're going to learn how to look you in the eye and shake your hand, they're going to be successful in work, and the reality is, our children get job offers from the experiences that we provide them here in Lancaster that otherwise they may not have had a chance to get. So I get a little, a little bit of a background on where we've been with this, especially with the CDOs credential, the Career Development and Occupational Studies credential. We had a presentation by Mr. Candela, I think it was at Williams Street School, and with the benefit of a grant from New York State and a partnership with Clarence, we went from zero kids in 2016 to 28, really in our first year, and then we doubled or almost tripled that in the next two years this year, and we expect to keep that up in 2019. And this is kids that go to Harkness, kids that have internships at the high school, kids that take business classes of different, that we've developed over the past couple of years, and they're getting Regents and local diplomas, and they're getting this credential that shows that when they leave, they can work and go into an entry-level job and be successful and earn a living and maybe keep on going to college, too. And we continue with our students that have more cognitive challenges with their alternative assessment. We've had one of the most robust work-study placements out in the community. We probably work with 30 or 40 businesses or agencies or organizations. It really started years ago, back before me, with Sue Jacobs and even Tony Demore getting kids out and working and being successful. These children get job offers as well when they graduate. So I guess, how does this tie in? I guess the question that comes to me when I finally figured out what was going on with some of the Business First rankings, I guess this is the question. So how is all this incredible amount of work experience, the hundreds of hours of internships, working, learning, making mistakes, learning how to work better, along with some incredibly effective teaching, especially at our high school, but across the board? So how is this reflected in those Business First rankings that are coming out here in May, I don't know, May 20th or whatever it is? So any thoughts on that? How do you think it's reflected? Bingo. It's not. It's not reflected at all, and in fact, in some cases, it actually, when a kid doesn't earn a diploma, either a local or Regents diploma, they get an ISAC credential, which says that they're, they've had a lot of work experience and they've met a lot of academic success at their level, they get that credential, it actually counts against us because they're counted as the infamous non-completer. Michelle and I first figured that out way back, a long time ago, with trying to improve our results and data. It counts, they count as a non-completer, and it doesn't, it counts against their graduation rate, so it actually hurts us. And to a certain degree, with the offerings, the vast offerings we have with our Career Development and Occupational Studies credential, a lot of these kids go to Harkness, or they have other internships or programs, and it's like, I think it was like what Karen was saying and Andy, like there's only a limited amount of time. Could we scale, I mean, if we didn't care about kids and putting kids first with our programs and the guidance we've gotten from the board and from Dr. Vallee, we could probably, I guess, scale back on those opportunities and maybe push a little bit harder on some of the, some of the other academics areas, or have them, you know, be double tested a little bit more, but we don't do that, because we have the flexibility and the guidance from the board and the superintendent to do what's right for kids and get them at their level to be successful. So that's the one example that gets me going a little bit about why we're not reflected, why some of the, Business First is very important, but it's certainly not the be-all and end-all for a lot of our students.
All right, back to me. As I sit and just listen to Karen, and John, and Marie, and Michelle, and Sandy, I just pause for a second because I hope you can see a little bit of passion and fire in the bellies of each of us up here, because we've presented on numbers before, but this is an exciting one, because this is how we, as administrators at the district level, work with the building-level administration, work with the teachers, to make some of these decisions that are good for kids. So, sorry, I just had to pause there, a little moment of reflection, because this is kind of a more exciting one, and as we practice and as we've talked going into this. Quick one, a unique opportunity. So just ask you a question. Have you ever in your life wanted a do-over, a mulligan, a redo, whether it's when you're a kid playing like, you know, baseball in your backyard or something like that, or maybe more recent, okay? Our students have had a unique opportunity since 2013, 14, to have just that, kind of a do-over or redo of sorts, and I'll explain a little bit. Since 2013, 14, as the state has rolled out the standards in math and ELA and soon-to-be in social studies, we've had an opportunity, or our students have had the unique opportunity to take two tests, the old and the new. That might sound a little funny, because a couple of slides ago, I just talked about avoiding double testing, so let me kind of explain why. I'll use English as the example. So 2013, 14, 2014, 15, our students could take both, the old and the new, and here's the difference between the middle school level and the high school level, okay? Couple of big things. One, students need a Regents exam for graduation, that's big, and two, probably should really be number one, is that our students could take the old and the new and get the higher of the two scores. So in essence, there's a redo, a mulligan, a do-over, if you will. So on the, no, older than new, let's say on the old, maybe they performed at a level that wasn't their finest and got a 61. 65 is passing proficiency, as you guys know. Let's say on the new, they took it, and they got a 75. 75 counts for the student, 61 does not. However, both scores count for the district and count for the high school, okay? So when we worked with the English department at the high school, the building administration, and us at the district level, we developed a plan for the short term and the long term to help those students take full advantage of that opportunity. And quite honestly, in the example that I gave you, the 61 would count against the district and the school. Similarly, Algebra I, geometry, and Algebra II had a little bit different pathways there, but similar scenarios. By the numbers, these numbers, okay, anytime you're presented with numbers, they're percentages, right? So you don't have the number of students taking it. What I will tell you, in these first two years, these numbers between the old and the two were fairly comparable. In this third year, okay, this number was closer to, I believe, 22, and I think I have another slide. But what you'll see is there was a distinct and significant difference between the old scores, the percentage of students who are proficient, and the new. So you can see how this could potentially hurt the school or the district, whereas the students are getting the higher of the two scores. It's not teased out once it's sent to the state. Business First gets their rankings or gets their data from the state, so there's no way to delineate between an individual student in terms of their scores. This is just the Algebra, geometry, and Algebra I in addition to the ELA. So that's a unique opportunity that our students had, that we took full advantage of for them in terms of allowing them to take both. Oh. So I've been talking at you for a little bit. We have a little math quiz. You can get your calculators out, feel free, because it is, you know, we'll allow the calculator usage. So what is better? 91%, no, there's no, we're talking to somebody else at this point, and no asking questions either, okay? What's better, 91% or 98%? And I know Chris already has the answer over there. We were talking, there's, it's a good question, it does, yes, it does depend a little bit. So I'll give you a little bit more information. Okay, now it should be fine. 91% of 172 or 98% of 96? Mr. Sage still thinking of, depends what we're measuring, yes? Okay, I'll give you a little hint. We're talking students, 172 students, 96 students. I'll even do the math for you. 91% of 172 is 157, 98% of 96 is 94 students. Still depends? All right. It's the reason I got into administration. So, from that standpoint, from that standpoint, let me give you a little more context, little more context, okay? This represents students. Now let me tell you that these are actual numbers for a Regents-level course at the high school, and I will tell you that we believe that 91% of 172 is better than 98% of 96. Why? Because we would rather have 157 students in this situation taking and being exposed to a Regents-level course. In this example here, it's physics, seniors probably taking physics is what that is. So we would rather have 156 students pass a Regents physics class than 98% of 96. And quite honestly, obviously, as you guys already figured out, it's a little bit of a trick question, this number would be more beneficial to the school and to the district in rankings than this number would be. But we believe that this number, 91% of 172, is good for students, okay? And we make decisions similar to that, not just in physics, but all along the way, to continue to push our students so they can get the best education that they can when they're with us for the time that they are.
Okay, and you can hear just by the presentation so far how passionate we are as an administrative team over those things that, when Business First comes out, we want to be the ones to say, yeah, but what you don't know about Lancaster is, and really, that's the essence of what we're sharing with you today. The opportunities that have been shared up to this point, obviously, I don't have to repeat them, but the opportunity that I took to share with you is advanced placement courses. And advanced placement courses at the high school have increased over time, just as accelerated courses have increased in our middle school, and it doesn't happen in a vacuum, let me say that before I even go any further. It doesn't happen in a vacuum. In order for a course to be taught at the high school, an advanced placement course, that curriculum has to be submitted to the college board, it has to be approved by the college board, and those teachers that step forward to teach those courses also have to receive additional training in order to teach those courses. So it doesn't just happen on a whim, there's a considerable amount of planning and a considerable amount of work that those teachers put into it, and we want to recognize that it wouldn't happen without our teachers. At the high school, currently, we have 18 AP courses that are being offered. Five of those courses are new in the past five years. We have AP Art, AP Environmental Science, AP Computer Science A, AP Computer Science Principles, AP Psychology, and new for 2018, 19, we're going to be offering AP French. If you look at the math, if you do the math on this, that's a 38% increase in the advanced placement courses that are offered to our students in the past five years. Wonderful opportunity. With the increase in AP courses, we also have an increase in the number of students that are taking those AP courses. So if we look back 2010, we had 462 students enrolled in advanced placement courses at the high school. If we look at our enrollment in fall of 2017, 875 students enrolled in advanced placement courses. Mr. Sage, I know you saw this earlier, do the math on that, can you remember? Round it up to, yep, round it up, 90% increase. I think, he got here early and he did the math. So 90% increase in the number of students that are taking APs in the past seven years. This increase is not measured at all in Business First. So we look forward. One additional thing that we need to keep in mind is that we look at the number of AP courses that are offered, those cut into a student's ability to take other courses at the high school. There's only a certain number of periods in the day, depending on what that student wants to take, there's only so many options that are available to that student. So students may opt to take an AP course in lieu of a Regents-level course. We want them to do that, because if they take an AP course, it's good for kids, and they may end up leaving high school with additional college credit that they wouldn't if they didn't take an AP course. But what we need to keep in mind with this is that if a child, in some cases, takes an AP course, it pulls them out of a Regents-level course, and those Regents-level courses are the ones that are being measured by Business First. Does that make sense? So we've just, we've pulled them out of the opportunity to enhance our... our results and our showing in Business First, but it doesn't matter. Because it's good for kids. It's good for kids to keep them in those AP courses. We've got a nationally-recognized Advanced Placement program at the high school. It's one of the indicators that makes Lancaster great. And what we're going to do on the next couple of slides is we're going to go through the other indicators that we might not have touched on so far in our presentation. Thanks. So let me talk just a little bit before I go into this. If we take 50 kids and we give, we offer them the opportunity for accelerated courses, the chances of them, those 50 top, top kids, the chances for their scores to be high or higher are greater, perhaps, than if we offer 150 kids that option. We're taking a chance when we offer it to more kids. But you know what's happened in the middle school? We've increased those numbers in Living Environment. We're at 100 percent proficiency. 100 percent proficiency. No matter how many kids we put into those classes, those teachers meet the mark and those kids pass those, they pass the test. They pass the test. One of my passions is I want to see every kid in the middle school take Living Environment. My team is tired of hearing me say this. There are some constraints that we have on that because of scheduling and because of state requirements. But if we could get every kid in eighth grade to take Living Environment, they can do it. That might not fare really well in Business First, but it's good, it's good for kids. So we have some indicators that I'm sure you're familiar with. We have District School of Character and, excuse me, a New York State School of Character. And now we're going after the District of Character, just for your information. You might hear about that next year. We have Reading Buddies, where high school kids come and read with the elementary students. We have Coffee Shops, the Social Skill of the Week. You can read through this piece, Bus, Recognize Nationally Music Department, Project Lead the Way, as was mentioned before. The Day of the Week of Kindness, we're growing good kids here. We're growing kids that really have a good idea of what's important, being kind and being generous. We have a program with Buff State, one of the few in the areas that is developing future teachers, and we use those teachers within the district. Seven Career Academies, I don't know anybody else that has seven career academies, including the Trades Academy, it's just been begun. Foundations Class for All Freshmen. We have people coming to us, asking us about that Foundations Class. Andy has questions with regularity. We have the High School Work-Study Program. As Michelle said, the AP nationally-recognized high school. AOF's a nationally-distinguished academy. And the Student Union, for years since this award started, they have gotten the National Gold Council of Excellence, our Student Union. We've got Hub, the Hub with Tech Mentors. We have a whole group of our colleagues are coming next month to see the Hub from all over the area. Chromebook Technology, Full Saturation. College Credits for All Courses. The Harris Hill Nursing Home Program, what John talked about. Listen, this stuff is good for kids. This is what we're here for. We get caught up in Business First and we get caught up in rankings. In our hearts, we're in the top five anywhere. If somebody asks me about this district, I say, "This is a top-five district. We're passionate about this. We believe in this." We don't know where the numbers are going to come out this year, but we know we have an outstanding school district and we hope you understand that, too. Any questions? Very good. Thank you, Mr. Sage. Are there any other questions or comments that we can take at this time?
My question's up. I wrote just some piecemeal things, Mr. Armstrong. When you were talking about, well, all of you were talking about, they don't see this and they don't see that. I think Pat and Bill might understand what I'm saying, too. That's kind of how our faculty probably feels as well when AP PR and observations and stuff like that, when you come in and you don't see behind the scenes. So I think a lot of us can relate to exactly what you're saying with, "But you didn't see this part," or... I know from myself, being a special ed teacher, grades or testing scores are not something I look forward to, but you don't see the growth in kids or you don't see the character they've built or the fact that they come to school now when they didn't. And, you know, that kind of stuff's never measured on that, on that ranking. So I completely understand these indicators and agree 1,000 percent. You mentioned the Living Environment class at the middle school is probably one of my favorites. And I strongly will say, my daughter, Jenna, is in pre-med at Ohio State, and I attribute a lot of that to Mr. Twinda. I've told him that, I remind him that on occasion. And that class was a make or break for her, and he made her. So I will forever be indebted. That class really changed her as a person, as a student. He is amazing. So, and I'm sure they all are, I just know him personally. So I'm just going to give kudos to him. And then my last question is, why aren't AP scores one of the indicators? If it's that, I mean, not all schools are giving APs, I understand that, but why isn't that considered? Because that last, the one slide you did where these kids are taken out of the mix, so basically what you're telling us is all of our top kids aren't counted. That's basically right?
The truth is that, the story is, right from Scott Thomas's mouth, gee, Scott Thomas is the founder and starter of the Business First. His story is easily recorded for Business First. And he just started looking at state retests and started looking at ways to compare school districts. And this is from him, I heard him at the Western New York Education Service Council. He said, "I put it all together and I started doing it, and then I just weighted different things, whatever else, and then I handed it to my editor. And I went away on a trip." He went to the Bahamas or something. He didn't have cellphone service, or he didn't have a cellphone, because it was 1992 when they started this. And all of a sudden, people went crazy. They published the thing and the people went crazy, and there was all kinds of fighting and, you know, questions about it and everything else. And he came back after a two-week vacation. His first, his editor said, "You know what? When you first left, I wanted to fire you. But after the two weeks, we sold so many papers." "Come here, let me give you a big hug." And so it's just continued over and over and over again. There is no scientific methodology to it. There's no rhyme or reason. It's, you know, a gentleman who put it together to rank schools in the way that it made sense based on state education data. But again, to all of the administrators' point, it doesn't measure so many different things, including APs and everything else. So, you know, I think part of this presentation, I thought you did a great job and thank you so much for doing it, is as we move forward, you know, Business First is archaic. Business First does not incorporate, you know, the fact that we had over half our kids not take the test. They didn't even get into those aspects. But if you don't have half your kids take the test, if the tests are invalid for teachers' AP PRs, the tests are invalid for special ed classrooms, and the tests are invalid, and certainly they're invalid for ranking school districts. So I think that would be my answer to that question. The piece that was sort of alluded to, and I'll just throw out there, is that, remember that each time that you're accelerating students, and we've been accelerating students for, you know, over a decade now, to get to this point, which is a great point to be in. But when you're accelerating students and you're taking an eighth grader, let's say half your eighth graders, or whatever percentage that was, you know, probably over half our eighth graders in Algebra, where they're taking Living Environment, definitely over half Living Environment, 270 or 450. Anyway, when you're taking your eighth graders and you're accelerating them, their scores are compared to the rest of the Western New York, some accelerated, but when you're accelerating, we're the number-one accelerated school district, or at least number-two in everything that I've seen, one or two in each category. You're taking and comparing our eighth graders against everyone else's ninth graders, or a lot of ninth graders. So in essence, it's sort of a situation like City Honors gets themselves into. They're constantly arguing, "Hey, listen, we're having seventh graders and eighth graders take these state tests. If they had three years or one more year of maturation, how much better would they have done?" So it's not about how well they do on a test. It's about, you know, having them learn and enjoy the content and those kind of things, do well on it, and just show proficiency and understanding of it, but also propel themselves into greater and bigger things as they move on to the high school, which certainly we've seen. Can you turn here?
Last year, Williamsburg parents, one of them? East Aurora with one? Okay, so let's say East Aurora. So if that's the case, then they don't have those accelerated classes, those AP classes, then? Because you're not, right? Would you, is that fair to say that they don't?
Just to be clear, the AP kids, because as Dr. Pretty mentioned, the formula goes back for four years. So if you have a senior, that student was taking Regents classes in ninth grade, 10th grade, 11th grade. So at some point, their scores have been counted in the formula, but the increase from 432 to 875 or whatever, that increase is not counted at all. The increase in the number of students taking it, the situations in which students are selecting, let's say, AP Environmental Science maybe, as opposed to a Regents-level course in their senior year. Those types of things are not counted. So at some point, those students are counted, just...
That would be a factor, sure. But I think the moral of this presentation, which again, is the superintendent, this Board of Education, this administrative team, and this teaching staff and faculty and staff are not about getting business first. It's about helping every single one of our children do the best they possibly can. That's the number-one goal. So whether it's double tests, so we get better things, nope, not going to do it. Not good for kids. Hey, don't accelerate too many, because if too many, you know, you bring in the kids that might not do it, might fail, and whatever, that wouldn't look good for us. Nope, challenge them. Let's meet them to their highest expectations. So then, you know, that's, I think that's the moral of it, is the, you know, the gist of this presentation. That at least I got.
Do you, first of all, this is great. Thank you for the presentation. I think about, sort of as a board member hearing this, I think we're all learning things that we might not have known. As a parent, it's extremely important, right? And you think about, I think about my kids and I think about them being exposed to this. And I would just, I would just make sure that we're, we as board members, but also community members and everyone else, and that have kids that are going through this, that we know this and that we're talking about this. Because I think some people probably do look at those rankings and they just assume a lot of things. But this is extremely important, and the impact that you're having on so many more kids than probably all other districts are having is extremely important. And I just want to make sure that as this narrative, sort of as you're starting to think about these things, that we're pushing this back at parents and they know that. I think there's anecdotes that tell us that other people know this as well, right? We looked at the birth rates, we looked at the separation between kids, now the influx of kids, influx of kids in the district. People are coming to Lancaster, and I think if you just looked at the rankings, you might not suggest that they would do that, but you start to see some of those things. So I think it's starting to take hold. We've just got to make sure that we're understanding and doing more. Another anecdote, I, my office, I'm on the fifth floor, the first floor is Business First. And one thing I'll say is this, and I, just like Lancaster looks and says, "Oh, listen, this may look good for the math, but we're not about the math, we're about the kids." I would hope that there's some semblance of that at any business, including Business First. And I don't know if they'd be open to it, but the conversation to say, "Listen, I get it. That's great that you came up with this thing and you went on vacation and people paid attention, it sold papers." I imagine that hearing things like this over time would probably affect that calculation. I can't imagine this thing was calculated the same way over the last 10 years, right? I'd imagine it shifts over time. And what I'll do is I'll wander around on the first floor, and I know folks there, and just have the conversation and say, "Listen, what about this?" It can't hurt. If anything, it would open their eyes to say, "Listen, regardless of where we're ranked, I feel really good about it," right? And I think we all feel really good about it. But at the end of the day, if we can inform their rankings in a better way to just help improve the entire Greater Western New York, that's interesting, too. Again, our focus is here, but, you know, conversation with some of them. I'm kidding, strike that.
So, you know, I know my district, I parent my district a lot, and I can't, I shouldn't, because they're completely different, but we don't have a tenth of those things.
Part of me, knowing that this is really good, is looking at you, Brenda, at Bill, at Pat, who are working in other districts as well. And for you guys to feel good about this, I don't know how else to feel, but feel really good about it. So I think, again, that comes across in this as well. So again, kudos to what you guys are doing. I think kids being the focus is extremely important, and it comes through here. And maybe we can do some work behind the scenes to make sure that some of those factors are factored in. Great work.
I'd like to add a couple of things, if I could. I think, you know, what this reeks of is integrity. And I've been privy to many of the conversations and the decisions that have been made over the past several years from the vantage point of a board member and the vantage point of a parent. And I can tell you firsthand, my children going through the elementary, the middle school, the high school, William Street, are constantly confronted with decisions and have conversations with counselors and teachers. And they make those decisions based upon what's best for their educational experience. And I think, you know, in the past couple decades, we've, we as a culture, as a country, have become obsessed with placing numbers on education. And I think anytime you're going to try to rank or put a number on an educational institution or on a teacher or on a student, you're going to develop a rubric that has measurements that don't include many things that evade or elude the instruments that are using to measure and to come up with that number. And I think we heard example after example. Couple of things that my children experience, character education, you know, directly, every single day. Volunteerism. If you've talked to students who go to Lancaster, they're always telling you about how they completed their hours, or "I still need to do these hours." And, you know, you slowly gradually learn what that is. I dropped some things off at the Tri-Community Food Pantry one night, or one day. Through my work, we do the food drive at the pew at our elementary building. Pulled up, garage door opens, out locks a Lancaster student who I knew, named Nick. And I said, "What are you doing here, working here?" And he says, "Yeah, well, I did my hours here and I really liked it here. I liked the people." So he continued on, on a part-time basis. You know, that right there, that example right there, our children are being exposed to real life and being part of a community. Social Studies and Science instruction, when many districts were incorporating Social Studies and Science instruction into ELA instruction, my son was about in sixth grade, and I went to the Urban House and I heard John Litt's talking about Social Studies as a core subject. talking about social studies as a core subject. And I would have hated for my child, both of my children, to be robbed of the opportunity to learn social studies and science from, from master teachers. So I think we, you know, we hit the nail on the head when we say, we make decisions here not based upon how they are going to be ranked, or how they are going to be perceived by those who truly don't understand the Lancaster education. But I think anyone who, whose children go through and experience a Lancaster education, and all the opportunities that are afforded by that education, will concur that we do what's right for kids. And I love that phrase, we're growing good kids here, we are in the kid business. And at the end of the day, I think Lancaster parents should be proud to have their kids in Lancaster. So, thank you for the presentation. I think that sheds a lot of light on some things that'll be topics of conversation in the next couple of weeks and months, and good job. Thank you. Anyone else care to add something?
Yeah, if I could, real quick, you know, and I know, you know, it came up, the number of students who are taking AP level courses. And having taught those myself, I would always encourage students to take those courses, even if their goal wasn't always getting a four or five on that AP exam. I would have students who are taking it because they were uncertain of their future, and sometimes wanted to be exposed to that material, instead of over a three-month or three-and-a-half-month timeframe over a college setting, we're exposing those kids over a six-to-eight-month timeframe. And then they go on to college, even if they don't get the AP credit that they're searching for here, they eventually get that down the road. So I always encourage those kids, at no point should you ever, you know, limit your options and limit your opportunities, and I think that's a testament to what's happening here. It's something that, you know, encouraging those kids to take those chances and make those significant steps beyond the, you know, and looking at statistics with a discerning eye. I mean, I know, one of the things I taught to my students is, when you combine aggregate data, you don't always get the true picture of what's happening. One of the lessons I used to teach was called Simpson's Paradox, and I could go into twenty minutes if I wanted to, but it's when you combine statistical data, and it basically flips the data to show one person or one group is doing significantly better than the other, when the data points the entirely different direction, so. And it gives, you know, those kind of lessons, and it should be something for the Business First rankings to say, you know, when you throw two-hundred-and-thirty-two indicators into a bag, and then, you know, shake it out and have one number come up to be the first and the second, does a disservice to all the other things that aren't connected by numbers, and makes, you know, connecting those numbers to education, something that, as a teacher, you know, I have a hard time doing all the time. And I know my own students are sick of hearing me talk about all the great things that are happening here, because they're, you know, they say, we're sick of hearing you say it, well, at Lancaster, we do blank. I remember the Z-Space presentation we had. I went in, and I was so excited, I wanted to share with the kids. I showed them a video, and I think they were more mad than I was, that they weren't having that opportunity too, so. It was like, I said, and I was passionate, these are my accelerated algebra kids, and they're like, why don't we get that here? I'm like, I want it here, we should get that here. So those are the kind of things that we're on the cutting edge of, of the opportunities for our own children, so. Kudos to all of you, and to all the teachers and staff and administration who are continuing to pull on that rope and push our kids for bigger and better things.
Okay, thank you, everyone. Five-point-oh correspondence, we have no correspondence to report at this time. Six-point-oh approval of minutes. Six-point-one, could I have a motion to accept? I'm sorry, before I continue, I failed to mention that Mrs. Dipczynski is under the weather this evening, and she has been excused from the meeting. Six-point-one, could I have a motion to accept the regular session meetings from March twelfth, two thousand and eighteen?
So moved, second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? So moved. Six-point-two, could I have a motion to accept the budget work session minutes from March twenty-sixth, two thousand and eighteen? Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? So moved. And the budget work session minutes from April ninth, two thousand and eighteen, could I have a motion to accept those?
So moved.
Questions, comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? So moved. Seven-point-oh items from staff organizations, anyone from the Lancaster Administrative and Supervisory Association? Thank you. Anyone from the Lancaster Central Teachers Association?
Um, I'm grateful. Um, we just wanted to acknowledge teachers and administrators during this chapter, especially block testing, and there seemed a specialism in the unpredictability of that, having to run out of things, and, um, we were very, very inclined, but everybody's been able to, you know...
I agree. Thank you. We experienced similar difficulties, as did many schools in the area. So, again, thank you for the flexibility. Anyone from the Lancaster Association of Service Personnel? And anyone from the Lancaster Association of Substitute Teachers? Eight-point-oh board reports, does anyone have anything that they'd like to report on?
I've got, I've got one thing. Yesterday, I had the amazing opportunity to go to Shelley Elementary and read to a kindergarten class. I know many people in this room also went yesterday. I know a few are going on other days this week, but, you know, that presentation, you know, I'm just proud of this district and all the things they do. But, you know, my kids are older. To go back into a kindergarten class and read a book, you know, it's, it's amazing to, you know, see these kids, polite kids, I mean, they just had so many inquisitive questions. Those are the kind of things that, you know, you just can't, you can't measure those, you know, that the kids are just so, so precious, and, you know, as your kids get older, you're like, I wish I could go back to that time. But I think that's, you know, something that, you know, anybody who wants to be a board member that do stuff like that, that's just amazing. So I appreciate that, though.
She does, all day, five-year-old. She says the same thing to me about middle school students. She loves it to herself. I understand your sound. Um, I do have a couple of things, just two things tonight. Um, this morning, seven AM, bright and early, there was an AOF meeting. It was supposed to be our last one of the year. It will not be, we're gonna have one more, but that's okay. We got a lot done this morning, and it was so good, we're going to continue. One thing that I am pleading for here is some help. And AOF is in desperate need of some summer internships for our students. We're looking for fifty students who need to be placed in internships. And this plea comes for whoever's watching, listening, whoever can help. And if you need more information, we can get that out to you, so I don't want to pick up all this time. But we do need fifty internships for this summer for our students. Um, May ninth, another plea for some help. Board members, anyone else in the community is more than welcome to as well. On May ninth at two-thirty, I realize it's smack dab in the middle of the day, but we are in need of people to help with interviewers and resume reviewers for our students. It's at the high school, two-thirty, May ninth. And it's just basically helping students through the interview process and reviewing their resumes. So if you are available that either of those, on that day, Mr. Dixon is the one you should contact.
Is there an, I know it's a two, but I don't have any time to do it.
I know it starts at two-thirty. I don't know how long it goes. I would just, depends on how many students. I wasn't told how long it would be. We could probably find, I'm sure we could find it out for you. Okay, on the legislative piece, it's kind of slow and quiet right now, but one of the things that I wanted to talk about came to me and kind of ties in with what we talked about with the budget. I'm gonna pass one of these around to each of you, this, you can keep this. I highlighted just a couple of things for you. So in light of the recent tragedy in Florida with school safety, the federal government has put the Federal School Safety Commission in place. And to date, its only members are DeVos, which it's no secret, I'm not a big fan of. I'm not, I don't know if I'm supposed to publicly say that, but anyway. DeVos and a number of people in the cabinet, so it's being organized right now. And they're organizing staffing, their timeline for meetings, and how to incorporate input from the stakeholders. So NISBA, New York State School Board Association, has put this out as part of the legislative piece. You know how I've been forwarding new stuff, you know, act on this and act on that? Well, this is one of them. So instead of forwarding it, I thought I would talk about it a little, because we had just put this money in our budget, and we had talked about what we are going to do with it. And this kind of ties into that, because what NISBA is saying is that they want school boards to have control over that, what we do with that here locally, because one size doesn't fit all. And we don't want the federal government, or even the state government, to tell us what, what we need to do for security reasons. But like, some districts may just need, like it says in here, some districts may need a resource officer, or some may need, you know, whatever, and others need more, some need less, and we should have control over that. So I underlined a few things in here, just to get your attention, things about it being flexible, and how the board should have a say. And then, at the bottom, I wrote a note to you that just says, share your thoughts and ideas at that website. It encourages you to share what you would like to see happen here in your district, just to give them some feedback. So it's at that website. I have not done that yet. I plan on doing that tomorrow, but I just got this. So if you would, take a minute to do that, and that's it. It's just that one piece. So that's all I have for that.
Does anyone else have anything?
I feel bad, because we were talking about, like, reading the kindergarten students. Did anyone go see Mr. Lancaster? Okay, so my neighbor, Emma O'Leary, who's a senior at the high school, invited me. I had no idea what I was walking into, but it was absolutely incredible. It was a packed house, first of all, and I couldn't believe just how much work went into preparing for this thing. So I know that a lot of teachers, students were involved, and then to see sort of the connectivity of the young men that were involved in it. What started off to me as not sort of understanding anything about it, I understood a lot about just the school, the culture, and just to see so many young people that were brought together in ways that they probably wouldn't have been brought together at the end was, was pretty incredible. So I just wanted... Uh, no. Yeah, it, it was, it was incredible. Yeah, I know who wouldn't have won it at the pew. He's sitting right there. But that's my personal opinion. So anyway, it was absolutely incredible to hear some of the young men talk about sort of their experiences. And again, they're coming from backgrounds that they may not have even bumped into each other at the, in the hallways, in this experience together. Again, it's just another example of the other stuff that isn't getting measured. And I had an amazing time. Again, I was walking in thinking, what was I walking into? And it was absolutely incredible, like pretty much everything else that I, that I, that I go see, so. I just wanted to say that.
Those are brave, brave dudes, aren't they, getting up there? No doubt. And I wouldn't have won, because I would not have been there, no. Anyone else? Thank you for that, that Mr. Jackson, and Mrs. Christopher, and Mr. Sage. If nothing else, we'll move on to nine-point-oh Superintendent's Administrative Report. Dr. Valen?
Two, two quick things. Comment about Mr. Sage said about the reading. Two jobs I couldn't do. Kindergarten and first-grade teacher. I sat down, stood all on the rug, and all of a sudden, do you know what the largest reptile, dinosaur is that's a man-eater? And I'm like, and then another one, you know, like they're coming from all different directions. My mom wants another dog, and my father's driving with it, and then another. I lost complete control of the class in about fifteen seconds. And I was like, Mrs. Sobolski, where's Mrs. Sobolski? Just gotta come back here. Eventually, I balled them in. I told them I was superintendent, and that I could cancel school. But I could not do that job, so kudos to all those people who can't, so. Group last, it's always, opportunity to do those things, and it's always fun, but boy, oh, boy, that a change. The other one is, I just wanted to mention that the Lancaster team had an opportunity, thanks to Chief Jerry Gill and Lieutenant Cronin, who invited us to the police active shooter training drills that they do. As you know, Lancaster police have used every one of our schools, and they continue to use every one of our schools. We've got a great relationship, and they go into our schools, and they do active shooter training drills, and they've been doing it for years and years. Additionally, Chief Gill and I have made sure that every single police officer has been in every one of our schools, so it's not the first time that they, they come into our schools if there's an emergency. But what I realized is I can't do that job either. It was pretty powerful, watching that happen, and the amount of training. Some key terms that they talked about, muscle memory, just the fact that be doing it and practicing over and over again. And also, you get a real clear glimpse of the bravery that it takes to go into situations, any situations, situation and risk your life on that thing. You know, watching and seeing. I was with a group of three brand-new police officers, and with Lieutenant Cronin, who was sort of guiding them along the way. And it was, it was an experience for me, I gotta tell you. So kudos to the Lancaster police, and all the police that, and fire department, and all those people who do things, jobs of that nature. We really appreciate the opportunity to go and visit. We really appreciate the opportunity to see the, with great detail, that exercise. And I need to tell you, as superintendent, I walked away feeling very, very confident, like I did before, but with a new level of confidence, with the expertise and the professionalism of those men and women. So I'd like to thank Chief Gill and Lieutenant Cronin, again, and all the Lancaster Police Department. It was a great experience, and it was a great learning experience for our administrative team. And it has spurred really good conversation about our safety plans, and what our expectations and what their expectations of us are as well. So it was a really good jumping point for some more dialogue, discussions, and planning, but thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Valen. Ten-point-oh old business, anyone have any old business they'd like to bring up? Eleven-point-oh new business, eleven-point-one personnel items, eleven-point-one, point-one, could I have a motion to accept the personnel changes?
Second.
Questions or comments? All those in favor?
Sorry.
Those opposed? So moved. Eleven-point-one, point-two, we have a tenure recommendation, could I have a motion to accept that? Questions or comments? We're approving it this evening, and then we'll present it at a future meeting. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? So moved. Eleven-point-two education items, eleven-point-two, point-one, could I have a motion to accept the Committee on Special Education's report?
So moved.
Questions or comments on that report? All those in favor? Those opposed? So moved. Eleven-point-two, point-two, could I have a motion to accept the Committee on Preschool Special Education's report? Questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? So moved. Eleven-point-two, point-three, for information only, textbook, understanding economics. Twelve-point-oh business and financial items, twelve-point-one, could I have a motion to accept the financial items?
So moved. Second.
Questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? So moved. Twelve-point-two, policy adoption fifty-seven, forty-one, or drug and alcohol testing for school bus drivers and other safety-sensitive employees, could I have a motion to accept that policy?
Second.
Questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? So moved. Twelve-point-three, policy adoption seventy-three, twenty, alcohol, tobacco, drugs, and other substances, could I have a motion to accept that policy?
So moved.
Questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? So moved. Twelve-point-four, through, twelve-point, twelve? Are all for information only, I'll just read off those policies. Twelve-point-four is second policy reading for seventy-three, thirteen, suspension of students. Twelve-point-five is second policy reading for seventy-two, twenty-two, diploma and credentials for options for students with disabilities. Twelve-point-six, second policy reading for seventy-five, fifty, dignity for all students. Twelve-point-seven, second reading for fifty-six, seventy, records management. Twelve-point-eight, first policy reading for thirty-one, twenty, school district standards and guidelines for web page publishing. Twelve-point-nine, first policy reading for thirty-one, twenty... Twelve point nine, first policy reading for thirty-one twenty-five, website accessibility. Twelve point ten, first policy reading for eighty-two sixty, procedures for filing Title I complaints and appeals. Twelve point eleven, first policy reading for sixty-one ten, code of ethics for board members and all district personnel. And twelve point twelve is the first policy reading, uh, fifty-four ten, purchasing. Uh, twelve point one, three, uh, could I have a motion to accept the amended two thousand eighteen nineteen school calendar? Any questions or comments? We, we had Martin Luther King, uh, Day misplaced on the calendar. That was just simply a typo.
We shall see. To be continued. When we see all the new regs and what they actually mean and everyone deciphers what they're talking about, then we may, but, uh...
I couldn't figure out, I'm looking at it, what changed? And that's what, that's what I wondered to do.
We just messed up.
Can I just ask, are you in favor of that new scheduling and schedule? Do you think it's gonna change much?
There are positives and negatives. And, um, I don't know. I have to, I I ask, if you could ask me that in two months, gonna be able to give you a better feel for it? Because what we haven't done is actually look how it'll affect our our schedule and do those kind of things.
Any other questions or comments? All those in favor? Those opposed? So moved. Twelve point fourteen, two thousand eighteen nineteen amended classified, uh, holiday schedule. Could I have a motion to accept that schedule? Questions or comments? All those in favor? Those opposed? So moved. Twelve point fifteen is Erie one BOSI's budget and board seats. Uh, and there are five candidates, of which we can nominate two. Does anyone have, uh, those they'd like to advocate for? I know, Mrs. Christopher. Uh, this is where we finally nominate, but two-fourth for our nomination. Renee Wilson and Ed Kavan. I've just done a little bit of of research and...
I bet there, I bet there is a position for first name, I don't know.
I don't, other than Renee, I don't know any. Based upon my conversations with other educators. Would anyone have any, uh, anything else that they'd like to add? Would anyone be? We picked, there's five up. We picked two. I guess we wouldn't have to pick two, right? One or zero?
Nobody that really, you know, kind of stood out more than...
Yeah, well, I, I, again, Ed Kavan is the other. Yeah. I didn't pick it. I just recommendations based on... Okay, so Renee Wilson, Ed Kavan will be the nominees. All those in favor? Anyone opposed? So moved. Thank you. Uh, twelve point sixteen is a contract with Orchard Park Central School District. And I'll lump that together if I could with twelve point seventeen, which is a contract with Sweet Home Central School District. Those are both health services related. Oh, the BOSI's budget. Right.
That's the whole reason we have to have that meeting today.
Today, instead of Monday. Right.
Good.
Thank you. Thank you. Yeah. Uh, does anyone have any questions or comments about the board, uh, the BOSI's budget? Could I have a motion to accept that budget? Any other questions or comments? No. All those in favor? Those opposed? So moved. Thank you, Mrs. Phillips. Uh, so twelve sixteen, twelve seventeen, uh, could I have a motion to accept those two contracts? Yeah, I was just doing them by health. Well. So health services, but... Oh, let's do these, do them one to the other.
Three, three different things.
Yeah. Right. Oh, yeah. Okay. So all those in favor? Those opposed? So moved. Twelve eighteen is a contract with Management Advisory Group, who handles our Medicare and Medicaid. Uh, could I have a motion to accept that contract? Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Those opposed? So moved. Twelve point nineteen is CJ Brown, uh, Energy, and that's our HVAC, uh, servicing. Could I have a motion to accept that contract? Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? So moved. A bid award is twelve twenty for, uh, refuse and recycling. Could I have a motion to accept that bid? Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? So moved. Twelve point twenty-one is a tax subsidiary with, uh, Rite Aid. Could I have a motion to accept that settlement? Any questions or comments? Oh, I, I don't... Oh, Rite Aid's specific.
Not every year, but I think it has come in the past.
Hey, all those in favor? Those opposed? So moved. Twelve point twenty-two is the Food Service Operating Reports for February two thousand eighteen. Could I have a motion to accept that report? Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Those opposed? So moved. Twelve point twenty-three, uh, surplus equipment report. Could I have a motion to accept that report? Questions or comments? All those in favor? Those opposed? So moved. Twelve point twenty-four is accept, uh, could I have a motion to accept the auction results? Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Those opposed? So moved. Twelve point twenty-five, could I have a motion to accept the change orders? Questions or comments? We do have Mr. Armani here. Hello, Jill. None? Hearing none. All those in favor? Those opposed? So moved. Twelve point twenty-six is the State Environment Quality Review. Uh, and I, this is for the Black Box Theater.
This is for the, uh, gym.
Well, the senior is for the potential eighteen nineteen, Kavala Avenue project, which is in the Court Street, in the front entrance way. Um, that second set of doors, some remodels there. Um, it is a little, correct before course because budget has been asked in order for us to do that work. But with the delays that see that in the approving process by, um, author who was secret tonight, then that may succeed the day of the budget vote when budget has passed. Then we can submit all the plans in the public door and see that and hopefully that, uh, a little bit of a jump on the approval.
Any other questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? So moved. Twelve point twenty-seven is the two thousand eighteen nineteen budget, uh, proposal. Could I have a motion to accept the budget proposal? Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? So moved. Twelve point twenty-eight is the eighteen nineteen property tax report card. Could I have a motion to accept that report? Questions or comments?
I just had a quick comment of the scheduler brings a fun chart, pause on, like, that. That's like something that could be shared, correct?
Yeah, it goes on our website, um, gets to the, to New York State, gets to the, tomorrow, down in the center of the site. Nice because they pretty much completed it all for us. They just had to fill in the dollar notes.
Yeah, that's, I mean, that's something nice to share with people who wanna know what's there, what's being applied, where and how.
We also have that, um, the, whoops, that we put up, um, that we went to in October in the work session, the Bible. Um, that is, um, on the district's website, is the video from that work session.
They can always watch it too, although they do, it's on our website.
No, but that, that, um, in all sincerity, that, right here, this, um, what do you call it, reference thing? That's it. She put it in the back. It's awesome. I think it's great. It's easy to share. So I like that, um, chart.
Did we vote on that? Okay. All those in favor? Those opposed? So moved. Thirteen point oh is public hearing. Uh, we have no one signed up to speak for this evening. Uh, fourteen, uh, point oh, future presentations, we have none planned. Um, at this time, um, I'll ask that we, uh, have a motion to move into executive session to discuss a personnel issue. Okay, um, so at this point, effectively, the meeting is over. Thank you for coming, everyone. Our, uh, next meeting will be May seventh, our annual budget meeting and, uh, in the LHS auditorium. Our regular session to immediately follow. And that's, is that six o'clock? We have the meet the candidates night here?
Yes.
On the seventh. So on the seventh, that will start at six o'clock with the meet the candidates forum, followed by our annual budget meeting and then the regular session. And then May fifteenth is our annual budget vote and school board election, uh, from seven AM to nine PM in the Lancaster High School Java Gym. Thank you for coming, everyone.